All right, so in lieu of Drew's. I'm leaving the meeting room today. We're going to call the meeting to work. If we could have a roll call starting with our online mission numbers. Drew, you guys here?
I am here. Hi, Janessa's here.
Drew Volk.
Allison Miller.
Paul on the foreside. James, white side. We'll move on here to review and prove the minutes from the last two meetings. We have to do this separately, so. Or the main first.
Hi, I'm in the first meeting. From minutes.
May versus May twenty second.
Second.
So. We believe we want to move straight into the section of public hearing on housing ownership options for view of RCW sixty four ninety. In the open hearing, we are putting the floor with public comment. Maybe that's the first. Yeah, open the meeting.
Interesting. Oh, I have.
Yeah, we are opening the meeting. Seven oh three P M. All right, and we will begin the open hearing. It looks like purple has prepared.
Well, do you give your report first?
That's all right. Yeah.
Okay, hang on.
Okay, I'm muted now.
You are.
Okay, all right, sorry, there was a little bit of audio on this. It's not great. My name is Curable Skinnerland. I'm speaking on behalf of the Residents Coalition of Schland County. We did submit a letter. I sent it to Lilith and hopefully it got passed on to the Planning Commission. I don't know, Lilith, can you confirm if the letter was passed on?
Yes, Curable, it was. Are you going to provide testimony right now?
Yeah, I'm just going to summarize what our letter said.
Can we, can we hold off on that?
Okay.
Can we do the staff report first? Staff presentation for the public hearing?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, and the audio coming from the chamber there is rather spotty and hard to hear, so I'm not sure what's going on there. Maggie, if you want to test.
I mean, I tested the owl. You think? I know it's been spotty. I don't know which other, what else to use.
Well, what we had done in another meeting where it was spotty, we just made sure that people were facing the owl when they were communicating, so the sound was directly to the owl without interruption. That did seem to help as well as speaking a little louder or clearer, so we can give that a try. So today's public hearing is on ownership options in residential zoning districts. It is specifically related to allowing condominiumization of dwelling units pursuant to RCW sixty four ninety. And the staff report has been expanded to address several of the questions that have come in. The primary misunderstanding around this adoption has been making the distinction between condominiums, which are apartment buildings or taller, bigger structures, and what's being proposed here, which is allowing for smaller homes and ADUs and potentially the cottage housing to be condominiumized. So we're not talking about a building type. We're talking about a building ownership. And that has been a big question. And why are we looking at this? Yes, we did get an individual application request to review this. It was also on our Planning Commission docket for several years. And this last year it rated quite high and we would have been reviewing it in the short term. If this request hadn't come in. The other reason we're redoing this code is that the state law says that we can't prohibit this type of ownership option. And so there's a attachment to the staff report that talks about that. Another common question that came up is will this result in displacement of individual renters? That question has come up in some comments and as well as some meetings, so you have that in writing as well. It is possible that rentals could convert into condominiums. However, it's very important to note that conversion of existing dwellings which weren't built to the condominium standard is going to be expensive. If it's done in older homes or older duplexes or older apartment buildings, they have to be refitted to meet the fire separation requirements, and that's extensive work. So there's a potential there of if, if an owner has the resources and wants to do that, they'd have to commit quite a bit of money to make that work. The plus side on that is it would renovate those older units to more common standard today, today's building standard, as well as making them safer with the fire separation. The downside is they become ownership units instead of renter units. Most likely, and, and that is a concern. A concern that is partly offset by the addition of two hundred rental units behind Safeway and the three hundred and sixty eight that are being constructed now north of Rattlesnake Hill. But nonetheless, that is a small possibility that could happen. Are the units going to be affordable? There, as we've mentioned multiple times, the intent here is to provide more ownership options. This particular code amendment is not designed to provide low income housing. And affordable is defined by your income level. So it is slightly sometimes unclear when the person is asking, is it going to result in affordable? Do they mean low income or do they just mean what we're calling workforce income at the hundred and twenty percent AMI? What it will do, it will provide additional ownership opportunities at rates at market prices that are different than what we currently have, where we have larger homes going on the market that are very expensive, or we have homes that have ADUs attached to them, so they're two units, so they're more expensive. If we were to do this and people did convert, you would end up with smaller dwellings, which does equate to a lower purchase price. To what extent? That's, that's the variable of the market, the open market. But the intent with this request is to provide more options. Are these going to look like townhomes? They're going to look like whatever development we currently have. They condominium process occurs after the building is built, so the building or buildings need to meet all the standards for the zoning district they're in. That includes height, lot coverage and setback. And then they can be converted into condominiums if they go through that extensive process of doing that. And again, that process includes looking at the building codes and making sure they're up to date. On the other thing that I wanted to clarify with my presentation is the request that the city not adopt this until we have a relocation program consistent with RCW fifty nine eighteen four forty. The relocation program is not required for the city to have in place. If we did have one in place, it would be required for anybody creating a condominium to utilize those services. If they didn't, then it would be the comment on the city to provide the funding that the owner was not providing and then seek, seek to get reimbursed. So it's a very robust program. I don't know that we have any in Schland County. I made a call today asking about that but didn't hear back. And I'm not sure very many communities have a relocation program. Certainly, communities our size, as it would require quite a bit of specific knowledge related to housing. So that's just an option. It's not a requirement to have that in order to move forward. It is staff's. It is staff's opinion that the impact of this type of program would not require a lot of relocation activity in large part because that relocation program is only available if the renter is fifty percent of the average median income or lower. So we don't have we don't have private development providing low income housing that I'm aware of in town. They do provide lower rents for some people, but fifty percent of the AMI is quite low. And that program would only apply there, so I don't believe that it's in the city's best interest to create such a program as it's be expensive and I don't know that it would be utilized. So it's unusual for me to share an opinion like that, but I, I think it's important on that particular topic because it's not relevant to our community as I see it based on what we're doing and trying to adopt in what we have in our community. So having said that, I will conclude my presentation by just letting you know that staff has reviewed the proposed amendments and would recommend adopting them based on the findings and facts and conclusions of law within the staff report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lilith. And with the staff summary concluded, we will open.
Can we ask questions?
Of Lilith, that's me part.
I'm, I'm sorry, you asked if there were questions?
For you. Yeah, is that part of public comment or not?
No, a public hearing is not a question and answer format. Public hearing is an opportunity to provide comment on the proposed amendment. So staff makes their presentation. The Planning Commission generally will turn it over to the public to take their testimony. And then they'll close the public comment and then they will discuss among themselves typically what they think about the proposal, what they've heard, what applies. If the Planning Commission members have specific questions, staff is available to respond. There is some leeway. If the Planning Commission wants to ask questions of any of the attendees, you may do that as well.
Okay, Sharon, as I clarified, it's a comment period, so it is testimony.
You want to go ahead and start with Curables?
We'll, we'll start with Curables, that's right.
Okay, so I already said who I was. Do you need my address? It's five ten Dempsey Road. And again, speaking on behalf of the Residents Coalition of Schland County. So we see that there's a potential benefit from allowing condominiums because there is the possibility that it might offer a lower cost option for housing depending on what the size and configuration of the units that are built. The downside is that it would also provide an incentive to developers to build what we feel are out of scale projects like the Stafford Street project, which detracts from the neighborhood and is far from affordable to most residents in our area. If you do decide to opt the, adopt the ordinance, we would like two changes. One is the language that Lilith referred to about having to conform, comply with the minimum lot size, setback requirements and other zoning requirements, but there's language in the draft that says that these units are exempt from the zoning code, which is very confusing, so we provided alternative language, but we're not co-drafters, so we would like to have that language clarified. Second is the issue of displacement of renters. And even though it's a low probability according to what Lilith says, based on her knowledge of the town, we still feel like relocation assistance of some type should be available and the city could possibly contract out for that rather than providing a program itself. The other issue is the compensation to displaced tenants. The state law doesn't specify the amount, but leaves it up to the local jurisdiction and we feel given the very constrained housing market in Leavenworth that we should provide the maximum, which is three months, equivalent to three months of rent. So that's all we have in terms of comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Speak to the owl here.
Yeah, you can tell hello owl. Yeah, same person, you can come up.
Okay. Okay, hi, everyone. I'm Caitlin Bettinger. I live at seven nine nine zero Icicle Road. I'm the Executive Director of Upper Valley Mend. I'm here tonight to ask you to pass the provision for condominiums. Upper Valley Mend has an affordable housing program with a portfolio of fifty one affordable rentals and affordable homes for purchase in Leavenworth. We have more in people interested and qualified to buy these affordable homes than are available, which means many local people do not have the opportunity to own a home in their community. Right now, we're in the planning phase for a new duplex in the city on a residential lot. The structure of the duplex we plan to build is already allowed to be built on a city lot. We would like to have the option to either rent the units or sell them to two different families as part of the homeownership program depending on the need in the community. But as of now, we could only rent both units in the duplex. This means there would be fewer housing options for local residents. Many of Mend's own renters have expressed their hope of being able to purchase a home one day through our program. We would like to expand our housing stock to give them this opportunity. For Mend, it's not economically feasible, feasible to build one house on one city lot. It would simply require too many grants or community donations to bring the cost down to a price that would be affordable to a local wage earner. Condos would allow us to continue to grow the housing program and provide affordable options to local people for purchase as well as rent. I want to clarify that our current rental portfolio will stay rentals. Condos would only be for future development. Thank you for taking the time to learn about this important issue and wanting to support condos in the residential areas.
I'm Ann Prossby, I live on Cascade Street. So I realized that this has started out about the Stafford, Stafford units, Stafford Street units. And that's a very small thing that is, you know, well, but the issue and the, the focus is on just those four units right now. And yet, this whole thing about a condo conversion is a door that can open to something much larger, much bigger over time. We're talking eventually that it could benefit, you know, you know how builders are. They want to build as large as they can, as much as they can. And so sooner or later, this condo conversion as it stands will start to bring in, bring to town denser housing developments that are, that are condos and take us further down the high density path. So that high density is something that means different things to different people. There are some safety issues that, that come up when you're living in a small town with two roads, one in and one out. And, and you have high density. And also in the packet, there's recommendation seven and eight that are talking about negatively impacting public facilities and utilities and infrastructure, that kind of thing. So there's always going to be an impact to that. And the larger, the greater the impact, and we are a small town with resources of that scale. So with, I'd like to mention a couple of things that we put together that we'd like to see in place before this kind of large open door towards condo conversion occurs. The first thing is, so again, right now it's small, but sooner or later it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And, you know, developers are, you know, sensitive to the public and so they'll, they may take it slow, they may not. But we need to plan, we need to plan for the time when it gets big and what are we going to do about it? So things in place that we'd like to see is consideration about what, what might happen. I hate to bring this up, but evacuating from fire. Condos are usually, they're, they're usually close together. The cars are often parked in a similar place and in an emergency, everybody's rushing down to get to their car and get out. And as they try to evacuate. So first they have to leave the development area because it would, you know, in a development, usually all the cars are in one place. Sometimes they're individual, but in any case, there's often one way in to that area. So there's thinking about what could happen in a, in a dense condo or semi-dense condo situation when people are trying to get out of there as fast as possible and they're in panic mode. And then, of course, after they get out of the, the area of the development, then, of course, they have to, they're, they're with us and they're trying to get on the highway too and get, get out beyond, beyond that. So what we would like to see is before this is allowing condo developments within and around the city is that that's, that this new aspect of condos is incorporated in the city evacuation plot, fire evacuation plan first. So that we're not caught, we're, we're entering fire season. The second thing has to do with, with water. Because the city hasn't convinced us residents that, that they're responsibly providing adequate water. Yes, maybe for our daily use, but there's going to be huge water increases for future condo developments. Remember, we're talking large scale and probably not the, the near future, not the distant future. And adding to that, there's firefighting needs for water, especially in summer. So we know that fire is always on everyone's mind as we move into this season. And we, what we fear is that the huge amount of water that, lots of water that's needed to mount a defense of our homes and our lives might not be available. It's all used up, I mean, again, step by step, increment by increment. And so I'd like to face it now at the beginning before we move to something and we, we don't have, don't have that detail taken into account. So we learned that the city is trying to, to discover future water supplies and wants to dig another well. And I just wanted to say the, the, this actuary, which has been doing this for a number of years, over a period of fifteen years, they, they dwell, they drilled eight wells and all of them came up empty. They were big and they know how to drill wells and they, they came up empty and they had to abandon them. So if the city can find a suitable location for a new well, which is actually an issue right now, will it produce water? And what this tells us as residents is that taking this approach is not a real solid foundation for approving future condo developments. The extensive water supply that needs for these large developments, you know, dense, lots of people, lots of showers, you know, daily things that many hundreds of people will be doing needs to be secured first before this conversion proposal is approved. That would really put a lot of what our worries to rest if you can do that. Thank you.
Free folks online, if you do want to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. And speak. Not seeing any hands raised online. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Pete Olson, seventy four twenty four Icicle Road. I am for the condo code. The condo code does not increase density or any of the other aspects. And we have the fire code for the siding with a wooey or to prevent, to help prevent the wildfire. If you wanted to convert, say, a duplex to two condos, you have to do the fire code application, which Lil had mentioned, which would be very expensive. I also believe the utilities would have to be separated per unit or condos for a separate water service and a separate sewer service. So that would also complicate converting old units into condos. Condos don't change the look or the density or the fire code. Actually condos have an enhanced fire code, which is much more rigorous than a duplex party wall would be.
Over.
Zeke, I don't think it's appropriate for you to speak at the planning commission. As a council member, this is going to be coming before you and you will have the final say on the decision. This time is provided for the planning commission to hear from the public and provide recommendation to your body.
How about as a resident? You think just getting a council member disqualifies me from speaking as a resident?
I think you get to vote on it at the end. I won't hold you back from speaking on it, but, but if I find it challenging to help the planning commissions remain impartial. You might sway them, but I won't prevent you from speaking.
Right. Well, I'll.
We can, we can take it with the rights all the time. I love the hearing.
Oh, okay, because I I thought it was just comments, so I'm going to try to ask, just ask them. So I'll just do that. I'll be cautious on this. I just I think that consideration basically should be given about our relocation program, whether we have one or not. Lilith mentioned that there's qualify, you need fifty percent of the AMI qualify relocation. And there were some And there were some preventative things that we don't have in place at this time. Given, I guess, that existing program. So my comment is that regardless of what the qualifications are, I think that as we move forward with this, because I think condo ownership is critical. They do need to do this. I just think we need to do it right. And so my own concern is that if I have this right, relocation program takes care of or seems to alleviate issues of folks who are displaced. And so however we do this, that we think carefully about whether what's in, what's in place now that we consider what possibly could be, needs to be in place. So these folks, this could be a very popular program and it, and it does open ownership, which is a powerful thing and it needs to happen. Concern I would have is we have something in place for the relocation, if that's, that's what happens if people do get displaced, then we have a rock solid or at least some kind of program to deal with it. I think that's, that's an important concern. So. So like that.
Thank you. Chairperson will blow public comment if there's.
I would like to have questions after, but I don't think it's comfortable.
Thank you, Chair. So I believe public comment is done, both. We'll move into the discussion phase of next meeting. Or mission members to raise points or questions, motion, both of us.
I could start off by asking for a little bit of clarification. When we are looking at this section referring to a binding site plan, binding site plan is separate from a subdivision, correct? Like, so when it says that a binding site plan does not have to adhere to underlying zoning standards when used for a condo, that thing that, that's because a binding site plan used for condos would in no way allow you to create non-conforming development. Because under the regulations of the binding site plan, creating condos, it would be all of the walls of the unit. So I just want to make sure that like I understand that and that there's, that like any further, yeah, because somebody mentioned asking for clarification added to the code, but it seems like it would be redundant. Now with binding site plan.
Yes, you're interpreting that correctly and the development's already going to be in place and meeting our standards. And then they do the condominium process after the common area remains as, as you might call it, the parent parcel. And then the actual units themselves become purchasable by themselves, separate from the land. And that's what helps make them more affordable. But it doesn't change the zoning requirements. If they were to come in later and try and add on to the building, it'd still have to go back to the parent parcel to review it for lot coverage setbacks and all of the zoning requirements, should that happen.
So binding site plan only, like that process takes place after the the overall like parent parcel site plan.
When it's used for condominiums, yes. Binding site plan can be used for other types of land divisions. That's right. It's only for condos.
To this section as well, Lil, I'd love to ask about D in affordability. Why are there two separate conclusions? So C and D both cover condos and the code looks, both references to D eight seventeen. But I'm not sure about thirty-four ninety is to be clear about that, of course.
Yeah, I, I need to look that up.
Okay.
I know I've looked this up before, but I don't, I didn't retain, retain it, so.
While you're looking at it, you know, for anyone else, anyone else?
Oh, you know, that is a type error.
Sixty-four ninety, right?
Yeah.
That's sixty-eight, thirty-four ninety-one.
Yeah.
From a discussion perspective, from my point, I do want to make sure that we return to the fact that all we are actually changing in code in the cycle is just our state's authority law allowance. That is really the only dramatic change in conversation. So I'd like to strike that point again, but I think we've done due diligence. We're not standing very far beyond where we're at today. We're just allowing for a new ownership model while it's falling off. Does not change how we build structures. But it took me a second to catch that, so I just wanted to bring that up to see.
Yesterday, this is an untold story. Yesterday, I was at a county commissioner's meeting and I arrived for my item early and happened to hear some discussion from the Shalane County Sheriff's Department, they were talking about, that they're having a lot of staffing issues. They, they're very understaffed right now. And when the commissioner said, well, what can we do to solve your staffing problems and attract more deputies? He said housing, that was the only item, that was the single, he said housing, that is the only thing limiting us. And he mentioned what like a starting salary for a deputy would be and it's right around the median income. So I went, wow. Um, workforce housing, directly tied to public safety, it turns out. I just thought that was really interesting in that we're, you know, thinking of someone like that. And it's like looking for their first career and they're moving to the area and they're making median income. They want to buy a starter home. I have a lot of friends in Leavenworth whose starter home essentially has been a condo because it's more affordable than the home that they hope to move into and say, I have family or or even families that have moved here and they bought a condo because they didn't find anything else in their, for years, they went out. I also, with the displacement thing, I want to point out that in the same vein, a, a unit, I mean, A, it's unlikely that existing units will be converted to condos due to the standards of existing units not conforming to condo standards. B, if a unit changes in its ownership structure, that is no different than a house that is currently rented going up for sale and changing owner essentially. Like someone can own a condo and still rent that unit the way that people own a house. So, so I don't think, I'm not concerned about the displacement for that item because I don't think that there will be, because I think that it would be a huge project to create a program that may end up maybe helping one person or three people in the next year. Off campus. Especially as Lil mentioned, if, if the program can only apply to people below fifty percent AMI there in Leavenworth, they're using different housing options.
Feeling urgent, possibly too high to five dollars in line. That's getting, that's fifty percent more loaded in. That's why they're supposed to sit down, but I don't know where.
And they slid highs to subsized housing.
Yeah.
Which. Yeah.
Drew, Janessa, any discussion points for me?
Yeah, I mean, I'll go ahead and add my thoughts here. Uh, to me, you know, just summarizing kind of the, the whole policy. You know, this, this is a state mandated requirement that we are going to have to adapt. And, and so, and we're doing it ahead of the requirement, but I think we're also being very thoughtful and, and adding uh, some requirements that are specific to our community. I think adding the binding site plan, yes, I, I do agree that it might be a little bit redundant, but I also believe it's one extra safety barrier that we are adding to the process that others are not, or that's not required by the state. So it's just, you know, one additional check and balance that we have and that will give the city a little bit more control over the process. There should, you know, something unforeseen arrive of this policy change. But I also think that this whole model is, is a little bit complicated and onerous from a development standpoint to begin with, and I don't think that there's as much demand from a development standpoint as, as maybe perhaps perceived. In my personal opinion, I think the majority usage of this would be for existing units. Uh, and so you're really not adding density, you're not adding additional housing, which, you know, to me is a little bit of an issue. I wish we were adding more housing. But I think it's, what it is going to add is, is diversity of ownership type and allowing uh, for a different style of ownership or in, and maybe it's in that workforce range, or maybe it's even a little bit above that, but it's a diversity of that ownership type and, and it might be something that is approachable for people that are looking for their starter home or an entry level ownership model. Uh, and so far, the only proposed feasible development that I've heard is from Upper Valley Man, and, and they have a model that's, is very clearly outlined and, and does add to the diversity of housing, adds to the diversity of homeownership. Um, and I think it behooves us to, uh, support any opportunity that they can, they can, you know, bring to the table. And it's just, this is just, you know, one tool in the toolbox. I think it's a smaller tool than is currently being perceived. Uh, but I think still an important tool that I think we should move forward with. And I think, cause I believe our immediate priority, you know, to Allison's point, is to advance any, any tool we have to drive uh, more development for workforce housing or housing in that price range. I'm, I think that outweighs any, any risk that this potentially would, would bring forth. So that's just my opinion around policy.
Hey, it's Janessa. Um, so I guess all of this just feels very theoretical, um, because it, it, there, there just seems to be a real lack of data in terms of what, what this actually looks like in practice. Are there any peer communities that exist who have implemented this and, you know, could provide as a case study to see what has happened? Or I mean, would we be the first ones in a small mountain town to adopt these standards? And then, you know, other people would potentially be looking to us for the pros and cons of choices we made. I, you know, live, living in a world of, uh, you know, of, of science and data, I just, uh, I have a hard time making recommendations without really having anything concrete. Everything has just felt like opinions about potential effects or the ways that it would, you know, maybe or maybe not, um, increase supplies of housing. And it's, you know, just, it's hard to tell how incentives would or would not change. I don't know. I just, I, I, I feel like there, I'm just a little uneasy with, um, everything just moving forward and, and having no point of reference or case studies beyond what's happened on in larger municipalities where you don't have the same, you know, unique factors shaping the housing landscape and challenges of, uh, you know, ownership barriers to entry, that kind of thing. So I don't know, that's, that's just my thinking. I can see pros and cons all the ways, you know?
Yeah, I want to address some of your concerns, Janessa. The, the state passed a law and it's in the packet, it's attached to the staff report. Um, it's part of the MRSE article, the article page number is seven of nine, it's near the back of your report. And one of the bullet points about the bill that was passed is that condominium sales, local governments may not prohibit the sale or other conveyance of a condominium unit independently from a principal unit solely on the grounds that the condominium unit was originally built as an ADU. The, the state is seeking more additional homeownership options. And that includes the sale of ADUs. Uh, the condominium process is a state process. Uh, most jurisdictions don't regulate condominiums, it's a form of ownership. Leavenworth does, uh, and we made that change, I think a couple of decades ago. I could look for the exact year because I had to look it up before. Uh, but any case, we did that when, um, a building off of Commercial Street, one of those, um, larger multifamily buildings, uh, converted and they didn't change their, they changed their parking and didn't notify the city. It wasn't consistent with their approved parking. So we adopted a process that requires binding site plans for any condominium process in our city limits. And that's kind of what I believe Drew was talking about a bit. We're providing an overview option of condominiums. You know, I talked with the city attorney, it's not altogether clear to me that you know, some property owner couldn't go out and condominiumize in our residential zone. I think that is prohibited because we have adopted the process. But because we have this process in place now, it does allow us the extra opportunity to review these condominiums um, before they are finalized. It gives us an opportunity to track them and understand what's happening on our landscape, which I appreciate. So at the state level, there have been significant and numerous changes. And yes, Leavenworth in some ways is ahead of the curve, especially for a small town our size. But most small towns our size don't have a high cost of housing that we have. We are, you know, almost twice the housing cost of Wenatchee, um, let alone Antiat and other small jurisdictions. And that housing cost has been the result of decades of not building enough housing or providing enough options. So, you know, So, you know. It was long on the agenda before I was hired and brought on to the city to address housing. They've been working on it for nearly twenty years. I just came on at a place about five years ago when I think there had been so much discussion, everybody was ready for action. And then, of course, since then, we've had extreme increases in pricing across the nation for housing. That have only aggravated things, so having said all of that. Yes, we may be testing the boundaries, but this isn't necessarily rocket science. This is providing an option to pull off existing housing for a new. A new ownership vehicle. We're not looking at some of the more complex issues that the state is going to be asking us to look at, which is triplexes and fourplexes. And single-family residential neighborhoods. Those are more controversial and where would they fit? This is existing homes, so I, I hope that, you know, some of this alleviates or clarifies some of your concerns related. To the proposal that's before you today. I'll turn it back to the planning commissioners.
Further discussion, vision? Yep, I believe we're ready for.
I'm going to approve the proposed code amendments based on binding fact of the provision of law with staff work. Adopting a new option for condominium ownership in residential districts.
I will note that we have the one typo correction which I'll make.
All in favor?
Hi.
Janessa, are you muted?
Yeah. Is it possible that I abstain?
Yes, it's possible to abstain, though. Right? Yeah.
I was going to say, was there any mention of revising to reflect the. The letter about clarifying the definition of setback exemptions with respect to adjacent units on the lot versus. The street, I, I think that.
That we clarified, we clarified that when we talked about. What a binding site plan is and that. The binding site plan is defining where individual units are within the parent parcel. And the parent parcel still has to meet all of the zoning district requirements.
Okay, all right, in, in that, some of those details weren't entirely audible to me, but, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have voted on a motion for a saving of seven. Motion passes.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Thank you, public, for attending and providing comment and everyone who wrote in as well.
I think we are going to table inclusionary zoning in units lots. We can open, yeah, both. We're going to table those, Drew, I believe you're better than that.
Yeah, I think it's a natural breaking point for the, for the evening and we can pick up inclusionary zoning and sub lot, you know, a lot of subdivision next month.
Okay. I will open the floor for open discussion items of the public. Yes, Sharon.
Okay. On these pictures, on page two of five. My, I got questions about, for example. The one on the top and the one that next to us with the. Condo, I'm assuming that's the condo in yellow.
These, no, these are all just examples. Of accessory dwelling units, Sharon, and different types. It's common to have an accessory dwelling unit above a garage. Or conversion of a garage itself or a standalone or detached unit. It's also common that an accessory dwelling unit can be in a basement or an attic space as they're small. But the graphic was presented to kind of show that. Any of these could be converted into condominium complex between the ADU and the home. Or the ADUs in the home, but it's showing that it doesn't change the look of any of those developments. They're still the same and it's noted in the staff report that's. Staff feels the standalone unit would probably be the most viable conversion because of the fire separation.
And so by standalone, are you talking, are you talking about something other than these pictures like the one on the bottom left?
Bottom left is the standalone.
Yeah.
The person in the house. Are they the one that converts their ADU to a. Condo or could they have built that as a.
They could do either, they could have built it with a fire separation with intent of condominiumizing or they could convert it.
Now, do they, if they are, their house is not. The, the fire code, their, their big house. Then do they have to do that before they can do anything else?
There only needs to be a defined fire separation between dwelling units. So if it's the standalone unit, most likely they've already provided that fire separation with the ten-foot distant rule. So that probably doesn't require the more expensive conversion.
Well, on the ones like the, the first one, the top left, where the. You know, let's like, let's pretend that's a converted condo. What is the person that lives in that condo home, what is the condo?
And the walls.
Within the walls of that unit. And so. If. The rest of the condo for homeowner. And the other way. Can't get along because somebody got docked apart. Is their problem.
That's the HOA's problem and an HOA too.
Well, in this case, it looks like it's just an H.
There's the owner of the house and the owner of the project, they're both two residences on a single.
So they have to be an HOA. Oh my goodness, okay.
Any hurdles for comments?
Oh, I think so. I think the hurdles are too high.
That's why we're not really anticipating a lot of conversion, but it is a tool and it is an option.
Anything else from the audience?
I'd like to write something, I mean, I made my comments in an email.
You introduce yourself.
And I'm Shawnee McFarren, I live in Garnett Hills, third hundred Commercial Street. And one thing that I heard you guys discussing is. Three-month displacement. Now, if these people are renting an ADU or renting an apartment. And you're saying, and I think this is for the state, maybe. You get three months displaced. I wanted to clarify something to all of you. The waitlist, low-income, affordable. Is five years throughout the state of Washington. And on these conversions, I'm assuming you probably would have to give, I need a notice. And then, so. Three months, they're getting six months notice. There are. Slid five years from now. I just think that's something very important to consider, particularly when the city has been emphasizing portable housing here. And the subject. Rent and what properties. And that's, I got one. Let you know before you let G M. Thank you.
There are no more discussion items, I will move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, everybody.